Good evening, good evening, good evening, good evening. It's confirmed that you can hear me. Thank you, thank you, my friend. It's a good place to say if you know, you know. Thank you. I mean, I know that other people will join us very soon, but it is. It is another day to learn at the feet of Jesus. I am excited. You know, people that you are here now and the people that are watching the replay. Yes, oh, yes. I think it's, I think it's the song, you know, just one. Oh, I'm impressed on my father, let's dance, let's, you know, soak in that embrace. But yeah, Jesus is my joy, so. Um, yeah, saying, it is. Oh, God, what was I saying? Yeah, it is, it is truly, um, an honor, you know, to share this moment with us. Um, it's a, it's a Jesus moment, honestly. I'm not saying this because I'm the one teaching. Even next week now, when Dami teaches, uh, my next week Friday. Yes, I'm setting you up. You know, it will still be a Jesus moment, even, um, next two weeks, when Abigail takes the, um, dating. If you like shine your eyes like that, you are, yeah, I'm setting you up, um, you know. It will still be a Jesus moment, because guess what? We have not come to, um, speak eloquently. We have not come to, um, you know, gather and rain. Honestly, if you leave me in. If you leave me, I mean, God knows that I don't. Hmm, should I say this publicly, Holy Ghost? Should I say this publicly? Should I say this publicly? Okay, I think I will. Um, I don't usually pray for people to join. Oh, God, send people, let them see the link, join. Um, because, because, I maybe there's a little bit of pride there, God save my soul. Um, but the truth is, Jesus is not somebody that casual people to join. And I say this with every sense of humility and responsibility. Apostle Joshua still man's voice, but, um, the best you can do for people is to present the gospel to them. But you see that hunger, that, that yearning to want to know the Lord. Leave that to the Holy Spirit and leave that to them, you know. Um, because as scripture says, join here to me, then I will join here to you. So our gathering here every now and then, sitting at the feet of Jesus is our, um, way of saying, Lord, we are joining here to you, we need you to come. And the truth is, I don't think you have, I don't, I don't know if you have taken account. Every time that we do, the Lord actually comes. You know, it is such a privilege, such an honor, but it is also a promise that we can always hold on to. As long as we sit here together and say, Lord, we are here, come, he will come. You know, it's not, it doesn't have to, but he's bound by his words. And he, he, he gave us that word because he loves us, so it a promise for us to hold on to. And, and something that we would not take for granted, so. Um, when we say Bible study, you know, join prayers, especially Bible study prayer, ah, maybe. But Bible study, people just think, hmm, maybe, hmm, you know, and the truth is, this answer they are looking for is in the scriptures. You know, but it is well, it is well with the children of God. Um, let's just use this moment to, you know, go and call our friends. Just go in the group and, um, tell that these maybe five people, the first five people that come to your, to your keyboard when you type out. Please don't type me, I'm already here, and don't type the people that are already here. And don't ask somebody that someone else has started, eh, hey. So go and call people for them to check their phones, um, and see if there is time to join. Where they are sharing, where they are sharing Jesus. Yeah, so please, let's, let's quickly do that, um, let's quickly do that. Actually, let me just do small DJ and, you know, it's small interview in between. But yeah, um, we're finding very great, beautiful song to play while we do that. This is, ooh, this is beautiful. Yeah, so let's do that, um, they would, would re-convert in three minutes. Let's go and tell people to join the call.
I'm glad that I'm called your own. I'm glad that I'm called your own, no. So glad that I'm not alone. So glad that I'm not alone, no. I'm glad that I'm called your own. I'm glad that I'm called your own. So glad that I'm not alone. So glad I will walk, I will run, I will fly, and I will soar, but if I fall, I know you'll catch me. And no matter where it is I am, I see myself in your arms. In your arms, in your arms, in your arms, I see myself in your arms. In your arms, in your arms. You hold me close to you, oh, yeah. I hear your heartbeat, your heartbeat, I'm glad that I'm called.
I am glad that I'm called your own.
I'm glad.
I'm glad that I'm called your own.
Yeah, so glad.
So glad that I'm not alone.
I am not alone.
So glad that I'm not alone.
I'm glad you gave me your name.
I'm glad that I'm called your own.
Gave me your name.
I'm glad that I'm called your own.
So glad that I'm not alone.
So glad that I'm not alone.
You always with me, yeah.
So glad that I'm not alone.
I'm glad that I'm called your own.
I'm glad that I'm called your own.
I'm glad.
I'm glad that I'm called your own.
So glad that I'm not alone.
So glad that I'm not alone.
So glad I will.
I will walk.
I will run.
I will run.
I will fly.
I will fly.
I will soar. But if I fall.
But if I fall.
I know.
I know you'll catch me.
And no matter where it is. I see myself.
I see myself in your.
In your arms.
In your arms.
In your arms.
In your arms.
I see myself in your arms.
In your arms.
In your arms.
In your arms.
Said, I'm glad that I'm called.
I'm glad that I'm called your own.
I am glad.
I'm glad that I'm called your own.
So glad.
So glad that I'm not alone.
That I'm not alone.
So glad that I'm not alone.
I'm glad that I'm called your own.
I'm glad that I'm called your own.
I'm called your own, no, no.
I'm glad that I'm called your own.
So glad that I'm not alone.
So glad that I'm not alone.
You never let go.
So glad.
I will walk.
I will.
I will run. I will fly.
I will soar.
But if I fall. I know you'll catch me.
You'll catch me.
Hey.
And no matter where it is I am.
I will walk.
I will run.
I will run. I will fly.
I will fly.
Oh, I will soar. But if I fall.
You'll catch me.
And no matter where it is I am.
I see myself in your.
In your arms.
In your arms.
In your arms.
In your arms.
Holding me strong.
In your arms.
Never let go.
I'm your own.
Holding me tight.
In your arms.
In your arms.
In your arms.
So I say, Baba know they let go. Baba know they let me go. Oh, no. Baba know they let go. Baba know they let me go. Say Baba know they let go.
Baba know they let go.
Baba, oh.
Baba know they let me go.
Never let me go, yeah.
Baba know they let go.
Never.
Baba know they let me go.
Baby, baby, oh, say.
Baba know they let go.
Baba, oh.
Baba know they let me go.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Baba know they let go.
Oh, yeah.
Baba know they let me go.
Say Baba know they let go.
Baba know they let me go. Baba know they let me go.
Never let me go.
Baba know they let me go.
Oh, ah.
Baba know they let me go.
I'm your baby, 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 baby. No, baby, baby.
I'm your baby, baby.
Let me go. Call me your own. I'm excited to do life with you. I'm excited to live life for you. Oh.
I'm your baby, baby.
Hold me close, hold me tight. Never let go, never let go. You hold me, you hold me, and I want you so close. Close, close. I feel the warmth of your embrace. And I feel the breath of your astral on my face, the way that you. Call me your own, call me your baby. Myself in your arms.
Hallelujah. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Glory to Jesus! Okay, I was supposed to scream like that because, uh, Dami had already praised my pastor, so I couldn't, you know, I couldn't withdraw. Anyway, good evening again, everyone, um. Yes, so we, we waited this extra seven, something minutes or ten minutes for, um, Jeremy and Amos Bissola, and it is worth it. Yes, it is worth it. So I'm excited to see you both on the call. Um, I'm excited to see the rest of you that are on courses on the call. Thank you, thank you for joining, um. You know, we're gonna have an amazing time today. I'm, I'm excited, we are moving into Psalms five, so, whoa. Yeah, we're gonna have an amazing time today. Um, and we would really hear the heart of Jesus concerning us. We would see him and hear his heart in Jesus' name, um, let's just pray, let's just pray. Let's just pray. Our Father, we thank you, we thank you for such a time as this. We thank you because you've not gathered onto ourselves, we've not gathered onto men. We've not gathered onto the idea that Bible study is fun. But we have gathered onto you, the one who is word, the one who is water, the one who is light and life itself. We have gathered onto you that we may indeed hear, that we may indeed be washed, that we may indeed see and be illuminated, and that we may indeed believe. Lord, we ask that even as we gather together this evening. Yes, rest in our midst, and it brings to us the truth, the revelation in the word, in the name of Jesus. Thank you, Heavenly Father. Thank you for eyes that see and ears that hear and hearts that understand. Thank you for the rema that you are bringing forth from these logos. Thank you, oh God, for light, thank you for illumination, for each and every one of us on this call, who join people who watch you again. In Jesus' name we have prayed. Amen. Amen, amen. So tonight is not a quiet night, um, as much as possible, please engage, you know. As much as possible, just, if you cannot move mute, make sure that your hand is on your, um, on the task box, and you're just responding fast. Eh, if not, I will call you. Okay, that's not it for it, but, um, I really want us to, you know, indulge me. Um, but beyond indulging me, be present, you know, that's how I know that you're present. I'm not, my, my gift of the spirit is not for, uh, what do they call that in taletelling? You know, so, um, there are some things that I don't have access to, e.g., knowing whether you are here or not. So except you respond, I don't know. You know, um, and I also need to be advised by your responses. I really need you to respond. Amen, amen. Okay, so we entered Psalms five today, bruh, I wish I had a drum, yeah. Yeah, I'm really excited, um. Woo, who wants to read for us? Who, actually, ah, you are all, okay, Jeremy's looking man. What's now, wow. Where are the women? Where are the women? Anyway, um, I think it's great if the man reads for us today. Who wants to read the whole of Psalms five for us today? Who wants to go ahead and do that? Who wants to, um? Who wants to read for us? Anybody? Anybody wants to read? Um, who wants to read the entire, like, chapter? Oh, yeah, oh, I bet you let call somebody. Who wants to bail us out so that I don't call somebody? So you all cannot come up, come, hmm. Hey, Lord have mercy, you all cannot come off mute, yeah, that's the word. I must skin actually. You can just let me know, um, on the group, if you are able to or unable to come off mute. So that it is easy for me to know how to drag or not to drag you. A kid, a kid, a kid. Uh, so I don't even understand, that, your hand, is it, are you saying you can come off mute or not? Multi-confused, please help me, um. Please smile if you are saying you can come off mute, then frown if you are saying you can't come off mute. What an instruction. Okay, okay, yay, I'm excited. Okay, please, you have the floor or the ground or the staircase. Help us to read. Um, I, I think it's okay for us to read NKJB, so I'll just be moving my screen as you read. Yeah.
Okay, so, um, Psalm five. So verse one says, um, give ear to my words, O Lord, consider my meditation. Verse two, give heed to the voice of my cry, my king and my God, for to you I will pray. Verse three, my voice you shall hear in the morning, O Lord. In the morning I will direct it to you and I will look up. Verse four, for you are not a God who takes pleasure in wickedness, nor shall evil dwell with you. Verse five, the boastful shall not stand in your sight, you eat all workers of iniquity. Verse six, you shall destroy those who speak falsehood, the Lord above.
Am I the only one who cannot hear Dami? Can we hear me, for God? Um, I cannot hear Dami anymore, but can we hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, so, okay, so it's Dami. Um, Dami, I think the last thing we heard was, um, you were starting to read verse six, so we didn't hear the rest. You didn't hear the rest of verse six, actually.
Oh, sorry, you went back to mute, I don't know how.
Oh, wow. Okay, so please start from verse six again.
Okay. Verse six, you shall destroy those who speak falsehood. The Lord abodes the bloodthirsty and deceitful man. Verse seven, but as for me, I will come into your house in the multitude of your mercy. In fear of you I will worship toward your holy temple. Verse eight, lead me, O Lord, in your righteousness, because of my enemies. Make your ways straight before my face. Verse nine, but there is no fit, but there is no fitness in their mouth. Their inward part is destruction, their throat is an open tomb, they flatter with their tongue. Verse ten, pronounce them guilty, O God. Let them fall by their own counsels, cast them out in the multitude of your transgressions, for they have rebelled against you. Verse eleven, but let all those, but let all those rejoice who put their trust in you. Let them ever shout for joy because you defend them. Let those also who love your name be joyful in you. Verse twelve, for you, O Lord, we bless the righteous, with favor you will surround them as a shield.
Amen, amen, amen. Thank you very much, Dami. Um, wow, I feel like we're in for a very interesting read, you know, this chapter. Um, but of course, David is not without his lamentations. Um, yeah, I, I, I know, not I feel, I know that we're in for, you know, an interesting read. Um, yeah, so, okay. I don't know, should we do a recap of last, of last night, a bit of yesterday, of last chapter? Should we do a recap? Okay, maybe not a recap, say, I mean, a recap, but not a recap. Ah, sorry, my first cooking, eh, rice, and it's entering my nose. Please give me a minute. Apparently, the door of the kitchen is closed, but the R M I is still fighting me. Lord, keep your servants. Okay, so, um, I think that I want to hear from at least two people, you know. Uh, what have you learned about the Lord so far? You came through the lenses and the experiences of David, you know, and the Psalms. What have you learned about the Lord so far? Actually, yeah, that's a good question. I'm just realizing that that's a good question. What have you learned about the Lord? What, what, what is, what is that one thing, um, that has been formed in your conviction about the Lord? Like, about who God is, um, or what God does, you know, who God is to his people? Yeah, through the list of David, I mean, so we know, I'm, I'm stalling in case somebody is typing. So we know that God is Jireh, because, um, Abraham had an encounter with him, and, you know, that name was Beth. We know that God is Elroy, because, um, I usually confuse his, confuse it in Hega or Higa. Sarah servants. Met with the Lord, um, and that name was Beth. We know that, you know, I mean, it's God who sees, we know that he is the God who provides. We know that he is the God who, um, he's a God, he's a stone of help, you know, because of, um, Samuel's in, interaction with him. Um, we know that he is the God who shepherds. Yeah, because of David's, you know, encounter with him. But like, based on, um, how, based on our journey, you know, from, from chapter one to four, um, what conviction has been built in your spirit, or even in your mind? Maybe there's no question to the spirit, maybe the journey is still going. You know, what conviction have you built about God, about who God is? I'd love to hear from at least two people. I'd love to hear from Jeremy actually. You can type if you're not able to come. He came to come off mute, ah, splendid, you are splendid, most, most beautiful. But if you're not, it's okay to type on. Um, I'd love to hear from Jeremy and Dami. I mean, if the other two people want to share, then by all means, please, but I would love to hear from Jeremy and Dami.
So did you see Jeremy and Dami?
Yes, I did.
Okay, um, I think one of, um, one of, um, one of the things that has stayed with me since we started the book of Psalms is the God who listens. Like, the God who is here, like, the God who is present, like, like, just a friend that is just beside me, that I can just tell everything and anything and all that is on my mind, so I feel God who is present and God who listens. I think that is what has stuck with me, yeah.
Wow, 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 wow. That is, I'm sorry, that makes me want to cry. Oh, Lord. Oh, my goodness, that actually does make me want to cry. God actually hears me, you know, God is here, like, I'm here, I am, God is here. Oh, my goodness. Okay, okay. Thank you for sharing to me, indeed, God hears, but God is here, God hears, yeah, but listens. And it's not just passively, he pays attention. And as in, so when I say passively, you know, I'm be in your house, you are behind your laptop, and I'm just working, but you can see, like, the God likes moving around, hitting their head on the wall and trying to kill themselves. hitting their head on the wall and trying to kill themselves. But like, you are just doing, I don't know, oh, oh, Fami. But, um, God actually listens in the sense that he engages us, you know, he, he talks to us. He, um, converses, he listens actively, not passive, he listens, you know. But yeah, um, that's, it's, it's very comforting, honestly, because it will bring you to a state of humility, like me, this is nothing, this sounds, in that you can just snap your finger like Thanos and I'm, I'm gone. You actually hear me, wow. I think that's the, that's, um, Higa. Why do I keep missing it? Higa, Higa, Sarah servants, you know, that was her realization, like, oh, my goodness. God actually sees me, you know, I'm not just one, you know, I was a one, one billion. That's not my case, like God actually does engage with me. Yeah, um, it is very comforting to me, so, or rather, Farami, um, please go next. Can Farami hear me? Okay, while I'm waiting for Farami, um, I'm just know, do you want to go next?
Yes, okay, so basically from the book of Psalms. If there's anything that turns out the most, because there are different things we learn as we go across the personality of person of David. Because he was always quick after the Lord and from time to time, you definitely understand this is why I was a man after God's heart. Basically, I think I was reading from the book of, I think, for me, I was studying on Kings and, you know, looking at David. So coming to read the Psalms and everything, especially of David's, and you know, I think it was the Psalms, when we were talking about association and all of that. But, and just as one of us said that God listens to, we as his children should, we have a God that listens to us and we should also admit David's character of how we praise his God and worship his God. And ourselves, we should be people of good behavior or be good Christians, not just apply and applying everything. But that's what's with me.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, thank you. Um, and I think it, it also just speaks to, you know, how we, how we perceive things. Um, and some of the lies that we hear around us and how, and, and the posture of our hearts, you know, towards those lies. Like when someone say, oh, I would just pray to God in my closet, or I would just, um, seek God, I, I mean, I don't need to go to church, I don't need to join a community, I would just, you know, find God in my closet, all these pastors, outliers, all these people, you know, find God for yourself. Those, I mean, some of those statements are good and true, but in the context in which they are spoken, they are actually evil. They are councils of young godly, you know. Um, because if we, if you don't read the Bible, who wants to know God? Like, there is not, there is no way God cannot suddenly appear to you and then you know, uh, and then all that you know from God is his visions. You, hey, there'll, there'll be no witch greater than you, you know. Be the greatest witch that ever lived. Even Paul, Apostle Paul, in all of his encounters, made of, I don't think any apostle in the Bible, you know, ever had that kind of encounter with the Lord. Um, and the things that Paul taught about, that things that even Jesus did not teach, you know, in that light. Um, but guess what? After his encounter, the Lord instructed him to go to the house of a disciple where he was taught. So like, there is the need for proper discipline, as in discipling people. Yeah, so proper discipling, proper disciplining of people, um, in, in, in the word of God, in the scriptures. And I'm, I'm trying to tie that to, you know, what you said about learning the charax out, the culture of David. So if you do not know, um, how David actually sought the Lord, you know, the way that he usually seek the Lord, you would not know how to befriend God. Because we just think, oh, we, we become God's friends by salvation. No, salvation is free to everyone, but friendship with God has to be earned. Actually, you know, I know, I'm, I'm, I'm God's favorite, I'm God, the apple of his eye, I'm his baby, God, sit down. I slap you, God, sit down. I feel like the spirit of my teacher does, you know. But you know, um, how people just feel like they can, they can wiggle their way into God's heart. That's not how it works. Yes, you're, you're forgiven, yes, you are loved. But God actually does have favorites. God has people that he trusts. I mean, that's what I mean by favorite. God has people that he trusts. God has people that he can boast, boast about, and he boasts of. If I say the same thing for everyone, you know, you can't keep, you can't keep following Council of Young God, and you're thinking, oh, I'm the apple of God's eye. Please, I sit down before I took that apple. Okay, that's God. But, yeah, you get my point, you know. Um, but if you do not learn the culture of these people and how they actually serve the Lord, if you don't know what David knew about the Lord, you know, that God called him his friend or a man to his heart, if you don't know what Abraham knew about the Lord or how he sought the Lord, um, and the Lord couldn't trust a nation into his hands. If you don't know what Moses knew about God, that could negotiate the fate of a country, not even a country, of a whole nation, as in, eh, 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 an inheritance, you know, with the Lord. Then you would not have started, you would be wasting your time. And you would just be playing baby, baby, baby romance, romance relationship with the Lord, and he wouldn't trust actual destiny into your hand. So, yes, it is very important. Yes, we're learning about Jesus, also learning about Jesus through the lessons of people who have sought. Whether in the New Testament or in the New Testament, by Jesus, I mean, like Christ, Christ the Lamb, Christ the Lion, you know, Christ the Word, Christ the Water. Um, and in case you don't know, it's for now, you know, it wasn't until Jesus came, that Jesus came. Please, they seem understanding. It wasn't until Jesus came that Jesus came. For example, a lot of time in the book of Proverbs, you know, when wisdom is being spoken about, it's actually referring to Christ. Because, hey, God, I, I really hope that I don't enter into meditation this evening. Because, um, Christ is not just a name and a personality of somebody that came to have one year. Christ is a, is a consciousness, Holy Spirit, please help me. Christ is a consciousness that depicts something, that has a share in something and that has authority and power over something. So Christ is a consciousness. So throughout the Old Testament, even though Jesus wasn't present, they didn't know him like the way you know, you know, uh, the way we now know Jesus, that he has come and all of that. Um, they didn't know him like that. Even though that did not happen, there were several instances and experiences in the Bible that if you, if you receive understanding from the Lord, you would know that this person was actually interacting with Christ. But, I mean, they did not know because, well, um, they didn't know Jesus then. But if you, and that's why, that's why we now have the whole Council of God, that's how we now have the word of God. Um, so when we read the Old Testament, we see Jesus again. For example, the Passover meal that they had, um, the blood on the posts, as the Israelites now, the blood on the posts, um, uh, uh, the doorposts on, on the walls, you know, the way that they, um, 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 had, you know, Shabbat. The way that they, um, washed their vessels before they used them. Those things were, were things that were attributed, you know, to the washing of the water, how Christ is the water that washes us, you know. Um, but they did not know, because, I mean, they had to use what they had in, in that time. But of course, we know now because we know Christ. So, um, how did I even get there? Yeah, so we, we, we learn about Jesus, learn about Christ, uh, but also through lenses of people who have interacted with him directly or indirectly, you know, in the word of God. So, yeah, that's very cute, very, very important. As my, as one of, one, as my pastor's brother, who's a pastor, Pastor Deli, you know, as we say, the, eh, the Abrahmization of things, the, the vivid. Yeah, because those people, they, they hit something that has become a pinnacle, you know, of knowledge. You don't let the culture of David, you don't want to become a man after God's heart, honestly, honestly. Imagine that your own man after God that is praying five hours every day, meanwhile, your prayers, you are asking for kingdoms and nations. So you don't want, tell God where he's pitching you your shit. And you're just, I would die in, I'm, 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 I can't do this, you know, and like I tried it, it ends up depression, they did not hold him. Oh, God, what it's, you are stressing yourself too much, you know, but it was like David, and he just came and said, ah, God. See, I don't even know what to tell me to do, you know, this is what I'm feeling, but I know that you owe God. It would have, it would, it wouldn't have entered as it, you know, but yeah, um, it is very important to lay hold of this, this treasure that we have, this very wonderful treasure that we have. People have gone through these encounters so that we can enjoy the, the knowledge and, and try to experience. You know, let's not waste this. But yeah, thank you, okay. I don't know if anyone wants to go next, um, chapter five. Nobody, nobody going, 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 gone. Okay. Okay, so, um, the part that Dami did not read, a prayer for guidance to the chief musician with flutes. Remember that Psalm four was with strange instruments, this one was with flute, so I can't even suit to save my life. Yeah, it's some of David. So again, it is important to know who you look towards, that it will help our context, this one. So we've seen now that, um, I think, but I don't know if it was written by David. But yeah, we've seen the, the chapters rather, that were written by David as we progress. So David says, give ear to my words, oh, Lord, consider my meditation. So let me pause here, because we can be here for years. Consider my meditation, Holy Spirit, help me and help your people. So you know how? Okay, please indulge me for the next couple of minutes. Um, Dami, as I call your name right now, what's on your heart?
What do you know to?
Yeah, share, you know. You don't have to share any detail, like just, you know, topics here and there. What's, what's right here on your heart?
Eh, okay, okay, so. Okay, I'm trying to organize my thoughts now.
Hmm.
So I'm, I'm, I'm supposed to have a meeting on Sunday by twelve now. So I've been thinking, can I go to navigate church? Because that's usually during third service, and then navigate church, and then the meeting, then come back. Yeah, because we are supposed to have a meeting after church, so, so, yeah, that, also trying to mentally prepare for, because like a meeting that could be huge business. So, um, there's that, that's on one side. Then there's a, there's something else I've been looking to get into. So I started studying, like, doing basic study, uh, research like yesterday, I continue to do. So that one is the one, another part, thinking of, you know, it just output that one together. So then there is a Bible study of yours, that we are doing too. That one is, is there, you know, trying to focus and listen, and then there's also what I've got to this night. So that one is on one part.
So you and I were thinking about food. The Lord will help us. The Lord, eh, isn't ours, because I can smell it. The Lord will help us. Okay, thank you for sharing, um. I put it to you that that's the meditation of your heart. And it's interesting, because our minds are capable of doing like a lot of things at the same time. And if a woman, hey, is even worse, because it's like, you know, the apartment, here, 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 but somehow, by in the midst of all of that, I'm just thinking, okay, yeah, I think it's like, oh, next thing, I have something to submit. Oh, like I just calculating, even as you are speaking. I mean, it's harder when you are speaking, because I mean, your, your attention is focused on what you're saying. But if you are listening, there's space for all those other things to just, when I say, oh, that's true, I'm not in my, oh, that's true, you know, you know. Um, but yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm going somewhere, please, please stay with me. Um, Tim Lane, do you want to share what's, what's top most on your mind right now?
Um, okay, uh, what is actually on my mind is the report I was working on before I noticed seven, it was seven o'clock already. So I'm going to finish that because, you know, next week is going to be bloggy. So next week is probably going to be the busiest week for me this year so far. So I'm trying to finish it and work on this week before I enter into next week. And I've started having a dick since I woke up today, because I'm already thinking about next week, so the tiredness is very good.
Okay, okay, sorry.
So basically, what's on my mind is, um, the reports, and also while you were playing the music, I was just going through WhatsApp, I saw Salem, so my mind has been on that as well. So.
You saw Salem?
Yeah, Salem and someone's stuff also. It has been on my mind, it has, yeah, it, my mind is just, probably to write a poem on it, to post using it and.
Oh, okay, please revise, please share with us. What interesting. Eh, interesting. Thank you for sharing, thank you. Okay, so I have a question for a couple of reasons. Um, so because I'm a student of meditation, I'm sorry that I'm bodying you people with this, but I'm a student of meditation. Um, and because of how I was taught, you know, there's every, there's every, there's every, um, opportunity, or that, there's every chance, you know, that, at every opportunity that I get, I meditate. And, I mean, this is a course that I took for weeks, by weeks, I mean, like, I think sixteen weeks or more than, no, no, more than sixteen weeks, actually. Yeah, twenty something weeks, I think. Um, and, and the twenty something weeks I've spent was just a surface level, you know, experience. So, yeah, I'm just saying that to say that. I own, I, I have been immersed in a little bit of meditation. So when I, when I see the word meditation, or when I, um, when my consciousness is, is tapping in, like, hey, be aware, I tend to start to, you know, absorb my environment, to absorb what I focus on. Um, and so that's why I was spending some time in this verse one. So, one thing that is constant in the life of David, or one thing that will be constant in the life of anyone who wants to befriend God, or anyone who wants to serve God and do God's work, be the art or meditating. And by meditation, it doesn't mean you are losing your thoughts, or you're just doing, or you're humming, or you're, you know, your legs are crossed, you're sitting yoga style. But if you don't, you guys witchcraft, or let's carry on, um, not that kind of meditation. But the, you know how scripture says, bring in every thought, um, to be obedient to Christ. Bring in every thought to be obedient to Christ. So how, um, you're not distracted by your thoughts. It doesn't mean that you're not thinking about other things. Or, or that what I'm saying right now. You know, what I'm saying right now, what I'm saying right now, and, um, what I'm saying right now can start to distract you, you know, maybe talking about obedience, and you remember something that you're using to, but then you might just go there. And, um, or, as I talk about food, for example, now, I've implicated Dami, and he's thinking about food, you know, of course, that would happen. But there is something that is constantly in the life of David. It is that, you know, in his heart, there is always, there is, he's always pondering on the heart of God. So it's like sitting with the Lord and saying, um, in, in this place, in this, in this conversation that I'm having with this person now, Lord, what is your, what's your heart? You know, I was sitting with my, with my, uh, rabbi, I feel like this is, this is boasting. But it's so good to say, I'm sorry, I was sitting with my rabbi last week, um, I mean, this Sunday that passed, you know. And she was saying, we're, we're talking about friendships, and she was saying that, um, you know, one, one thing that she has learned is that in the midst of her conversations, even in the hard ones, even in the hurtful ones, even in the uncomfortable ones, you know, what always comes to her mind is, um, seeking first the kingdom of God and his righteousness. And honestly, I, I never saw that in her life, sadly, until that day rather. Um, when we think of seeking first the kingdom of God, we think of, oh, I would just go and do, you know, serve in church, or, oh, start a ministry, or serve in a ministry, or help Moriah, or, you know. I would just support somebody, or start something, like go to the prison and preach the gospel, deliver bad nations. Um, or, oh, I would just give God my first fruit, my first salary, or pay my tithe steadily, like, that's what comes to our mind. But guess what she said? In her conversations with people, in her interactions with people, she's constantly thinking, what is the will of God? What is the kingdom of God here? So let's say you are having a conversation with a friend who has always, um, hurt you or said hurtful things about you or to you, or belied you, or, you know, bashed you with their words, or even with their actions. And because you're a child of God, you know, you know that you, you, you are angry differently, as we've learned. You're angry, but you don't say, um, so because you're seeking out, you're, you're trying to, and it's not, it's not just enough to say, oh, I'm making peace. Of course, there's a relationship that you have to destroy, like, if you hit the person, it means you value your relationship with God more than you value your relationship with the person. You know, but that's probably the case anyway. Um, but like in, in your conversation with the person, in your interactions with the person, maybe God has said, oh, um, I want you to talk to this person, I want you to send a message to this person, call this person, and, you know, ask them how they are. Um, it's better to pray that you feel, based on what you've done. And she said, you know, um, the mention of our hearts would be, what's, what's the kingdom of God here? How would God want me to serve this person? How would God want me to, um, talk to this person? What is God's heart in this conversation? What is God's heart over this person? Over me, over us, you know, as the case may be. And it just occurred to me that, oh, my God, seeking first the kingdom of God is not just doing the kingdom of God, doing like the major things that we know. But it's also seeking out God's hearts concerning everything. So, back to what I was saying, what was constant for David, what was a culture for him? And for anyone who wants to befriend God, would be that, um, you know, they are constantly seeking out God's love. So even if you have several things on your mind that you need to attend to, in those things, how is Christ glorified? Of course, Christ is glorified, you take care of your body and you eat well. You know, it's not like when you are, you are, um, what's the word now, lost in your food, and you're just thinking, ah, I have a premiere, oh, God. I would, I would melt, oh, you know, like, that's not what you're thinking of. And if you thought about it like that, Lord, I hope you are forgiving you, you know, but like, oh, I, I'm hungry right now, I need to eat. That is righteous, you know. Um, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to bail myself out. God is helping me. My sister is not helping me right now. God is helping me. Um, I, I need to, you know, be at a meeting, I'm usually, I need to be at a meeting, um, on Sunday. There is church, church, church time collab with that time, you know, this meeting is God's will for me. It's not like maybe I'm doing something outside of the will of God. Church is God's will for me, how they match both. It's Christ glorified in the way that you are possessing those thoughts. Um, can, can he comfortably come into that conversation and is not an intrusion? It's actually a question for us to find out. If God is, if God, hmm, if God comes into your thoughts, will he be an invasion or will he be a comfort zone for you? So when David says, consider my meditation, meaning there's something that he has been pondering again and again, again and again, as it comes, that thing is on your heart. As it comes, that thing is on your heart. For some of us, I may not put myself in between. For some people, it is money. How do I make money? How do I make money? How do I, that cannot be, that cannot be meditation of your heart, child of God. For some people, it's, hey, it's this hair that I want to buy. Oh, God, when I save, 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 you know, he has to, that, that money has to complete. It's sixty K, now I have fifty five K, okay, five K to go, what do I need to do? It cannot be that, um, um, there's a party that whatever they invited you to, and all that you can think of, all that is in your mind is what to hear, how to dress, you know, how to kill them there, spray money. Not like those things are bad in themselves. But again, the question is, if God comes into that thoughts, will he be an invasion? It be, would he be invading your thoughts? Or would it be something that you're already carrying him along with anyway? So it's comfort zone for him. What is the meditation of your heart? What are you constantly thinking of? Is it in line, is it in sync with the heart of God? I was telling somebody who had, who had asked me, you know, um, that, oh, she wants to do something for God. Um, and I'm laughing because the person is here, but I don't want to call her name, or his name, it's too late, it's her name. Um, and I was telling her that, you know. Thank God, there are two, there are two hearts here, so if you guess, you either fifty percent wrong, but right, anyway, um. And I was saying that, in the very little things that you do daily. There is service here. Service to God is not just, oh, there is one big idea, there is one big assignment, I've got a space in my hand, so. I'm on my way to fulfill it and then I'm in purpose. Service to God is, I'm gonna take care of my body every day. If you need to use skincare, you have the means, use it. It's not vain, you know, to want to preserve your temple. It is not vain. I mean, if you have a beauty and you sweep it every day, you spray a freshener, those things are not vain. So if your body is a temple where God dwells, it is not vain for you to. Tend to it, like a God. Of course, you don't mean, I mean, again, the question will always be, you know, is Christ glorified? Is Christ, is Christ glorified if your, if your skin is glowing? Of course he is. Are you kidding me? Is he not the one that created my skin? He's not the one that gave me this skin? Ah, don't play. You know, it's quite glorified if you make your hair and it's tidy and. Of course he is. Is it, is it glorified if you, you know, cut your hair, um, 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 and you don't leave it untidy? Of course he is. Is it glorified if you roll on and the other rounds before you go out, so you don't keep people smell? Oh, please, yes, he is. You know, so like, it's not, it's not until you have one big assignment. It's not until there's one calling, quote unquote, to your head, that you cannot start to do, oh, this is what's on God's heart. I tell you that every day that you live your life, that you do things, very little, everyday activities that you carry out. There is the heart of God concerning those. Of course, there's always a bigger picture, you know, God's grand plan for the universe, God's. God's grand plan for the church, and God's grand plan for you. But in your day-to-day life, I, 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 I want this to help us to see service unto God. Or see what ship, as not just, you know, something that is in one picture, and then everything is towards that picture. Even in my daily interactions, the way that I talk to Dami, the way that I interact with Timmy Lane, in the way that I do the work that I do, the way that I serve the people that I serve. As I would always say, I serve people, I don't work for people, I don't work for people, I serve people, you know, and I'm not saying that with pride, of that. Quite the opposite, I'm telling you with humility, but again, God has put something in me that people need, so I serve them with it. I'm a servant, you know, I always date everywhere and any, any time. Um, so in the way that I serve the people that I serve, the way that I build the businesses that I build, and the people that I build as well, it is service unto God. So, the posture of my heart should always be, what is God's heart? And it's something I'm praying to God to help me with. I'm not just thinking, oh, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm in, my next part in this field, I don't know what to do. No, 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 like, yeah, I know all the Ts and all the Is. But Lord, what is your heart, what is? To seek you first the kingdom of God and its righteousness, and every other thing will be added on to you. So, in the, you're, you're having a. Um, an interesting relationship with your friend, even with your spouse, with your partner, you know, and you are just constantly asking, what is your heart? Over this relationship over, and then you seek, but you seek his heart, and then you do his heart. The thing that you need, the actual thing that you need, not what you want, what you need will be added on to you. It's a, I don't like to use word of God as a formula, but this is a formula that, that, that always works. Because then when you start to seek his heart, your desires start to change, start to beat in sync with his heart, and then it becomes easy for you to manifest, you know. I don't mean for you on that, I know, I'm trying to. Um, so, David says, give ear to my words, oh Lord, consider my meditation. I mean, there is something that has been on the heart of David, again and again and again and again, and he's asking the Lord, you know, to, um. To, to, to see what he's thinking about. So, let's say that, um. Let's say that, maybe his meditation is, oh, I want to build a temple for the Lord. And then he has just been thinking about it, oh, I really want, you know, I really want to build a temple for the Lord, I really want to have God dwell in a house that is beautiful. I want to build a gigantic, 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 gigantic. Yeah, the thing, you know, it was beautiful, my God, and then he's just thinking, and then this verse takes, consider my meditation. There's something that my heart has been drawn to, there's something that I've been pondering on again and again and again and again, Lord. What to do? Okay, leave that, um, the grace that God wanted to reach through, his heart and God's breast has been. Has rounded up. So let's move on. Um, so I wanted to read the Strong's definition for meditation here. Um, it says, um, hagig, hagig, or hagig rather. Um, hagig, yes, and it means properly a momo that is complained. In brackets, meditation musing. So when they say, when there's nobody, um, when I say my musings, you know, it means my thoughts, what I'm thinking about, what I am, um. What I'm pondering on again. So I really wanted us to, to, to see that. And consider, in this case, means, um, ben, no, sorry, bin, bin, yes, bin. And it means, um. Separate mentally or distinguished, that is generally understand, attend, um, attend diligently. Direct discern, instruct, um, perceive, teach. Understand. So David is literally saying, come to it and come and see. Hear me, hear the meditation of my heart. Come and pay attention to the meditation of my heart, you know. Yes, so give ear to my words, oh God, consider the meditation of my heart. And if we, if you, if you see the, um, what's it called now? The, the parts in quotes, the bubble. You know, it takes us to some, for verse one. Where he says, hear me when I call God of my righteousness, believe me in my distress. So, yeah, he's saying, give ear to my words. Again, David's culture is old, you know. Again and again and again and again, you know. I feel like, if maybe, if we have many babies in this world, I'm not like, God cannot be exhausted, or be tired, or be worn out, or. I feel like there'll be a lot of, okay, um, like, the world doesn't very better, because now we can engage God properly and stop doing back end. Tell this person to pay a bill for this, for sure. But yeah, um, give ear to my words, oh Lord, consider my meditation. Give heed to the voice of my cry, my king and my God, for to you I will pray. Again, David's relationship with the Lord is very personal, very, very personal. David's relationship with the Lord is very, very, very personal, very, very, very personal. And it's a call for us to not be distant, not call on God from a distance. You know, it's like you're, you're hiding behind walls and saying, I know that there's a God on the other side though, I know that there's a God on the other side, I know. And I know that you have done this for, for Ty, I can't eat any of the one alaba. But just in case you hear me too, please, oh God, you can just help me to do this thing, that you now, you know. Send that your list and put it under the, under the wall and just, you know, skip it over to the other side and say, just in case God sees it and has this busy schedule, he. That's not how God is, that's not how God wants to be to us. He wants to have conversations with us. He wants to, before he withdraws his grace from a, from a country, come and have a conversation with Timmy Lane and say, what do you think about? About eh eh Denmark? What do you think we should do next? It's, it's the season that they are entering into, you know, according to my plans for them. This is where they are supposed to be now, or this is the unrighteousness that I have heard, or this is the righteousness, you know, that has, um. Been, the altar of righteousness has been erected for them. Um, and I want to, this is my plan, what do you think? God still has those people, but he needs to trust us enough to now begin to bring us into his thoughts. He needs to see the way, where we, we really want to do, what, what's on his heart. Because he did not tell us what's on his heart quite a time, and we are foolish, we just do nonsense. That's the truth, like, we don't do nonsense, nonsense. Imagine that. So, um, I was listening to, you know, my tutor and he was saying that, um. Talking about, you know, Noah and then all the other people that had conversations with God over nations and. You know, the sages in the Bible, or like, the, the sages, you know, they consider Noah the weakest of men. Sorry, please give me a moment, um. Sorry, yeah, so the sages, you know, they had a. Their, their, um, judgment over Noah is that he's the weakest of the men, you know, and I'm not asking the question, let me just answer it. And the reason is because when God brought the option of, you know, what to do with the nation, with the, with the world at that time, Noah did not intercede. He just said, oh, okay, he wants to start a new generation with me, oh, what, what. But when the same question was posed to Abraham, he started to beg, Lord, even if it's just fifty people. Okay, Lord, don't be angry, what if you just participate? Okay, my God, I know that I've stressed, I've, 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 I've been very, you know. Nonchalant, this is my question, what if it's thirty? But if you're already hearing me, just continue to hear me, I'm sorry, what if it's twenty? Like, that's how much, you know, um, of a friend Abraham was. But the reason that he, he attained that relationship, that, that status, was not because he was a faithful man, or, you know, he was, he was a saint. Abraham had his many exorcises, maybe, maybe not say many, he had his exorcises, you know. Um, and so did David, so did Moses, they were not perfect people, but they had a heart of God. And that's what we must learn as children of God, the heart of God. If God comes to you now and says, let me clear everybody in Nigeria, you know how we, how we sustain in our, in our. I would just say, let everybody, let, let, let us stay on the country, let us just start again. You're taking a shot to country. You think you're thriving, oh Lord. And that just tells us that if we put them above us, the power, so go and fast and pray because doom is coming, you know. Um, when it got to the time of Moses and the Lord said, you know what, these people, they've always, I, I, I did all of these mighty things for them, and yes, they had the gods to reject me. You know, I will clean all of them, they would die in the wilderness, I don't know you would. And Moses said, ha, so the judge of your earth not do right, but my master said, let's not do like that. And he said, yes, you don't know, that is intercession. And it tells you that the heart of God is never ever destruction, it is, it is, it is mercy. That tells you. Because for God to be able to have conversations with those people, you know. Um, I think in the book of Jeremiah that he was saying, and I searched, I searched the whole earth, I was looking for him, like, is there not somebody that would raise an altar for these people? Like, yeah, they are, they are, they are, they are being destroyed, they are throwing the path of destruction. Who is going to intercede? Who is going to raise an altar of mercy for these people? That is the heart of God. We think it is God's will to destroy the whole world. You think, oh, you know, there's so much, let God just come and pour fire. And then those are starting again. You think that's the heart of God? Of course, God is a holy God, he's righteous, his will is that righteousness are revealed in. In, 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 uh, 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 in all of the earth, and the glory of the knowledge of God, we cover the earth as, as water covers the sea, that's the will of God. But it is not his will that anybody should perish, as Jesus has told us, but it is his will that all may be saved. If God's will is judgment, judgment and destruction all the time, you think he would send Jesus? And so when it came to the time of Noah and he said, I will clean out the whole world, you know, they, 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 they stressed me. He said, one, one day I'm gonna die in me, no, I didn't even say pen. He just went ahead and started building the ark. He didn't intercede. He was fine with, you know, what God had told him. He was fine. So I thought, you know, me and my family was safe, and I feel like a lot of us have that mentality. God help us. The people who are after God's heart are the people who are willing to understand what the heart of God is saying. I mean, sometimes I wake up and I'm just saying, God, there's so much in my heart right now that I want to do, you know, yeah, my very many things to do. What is on your heart? Like, bring me into what your will is. And when we think of the will of God, we think of, oh, God's perfect plan. That is true, but it's also the, what is, what is, what is his burden in this moment? And you'd be shocked that sometimes it's not, oh, go to the nations, it is, there is one woman on the street that, that has been crying for help. I just need to send that to you. You will be shocked. But unless we bring ourselves to actually begin to. Our ears on the heart of God and say, what are you, what are you thinking about, my king? What is, what is burdening you? Paddy, let me, send me that work. You know how, I mean, maybe, maybe I know, because I do it sometimes. You know, I just go to my friends and say, how can I save you? Like, what are you doing right now? What, what, what season are you in right now? What are you doing? How can I save you? Oh, I know that they are starting a project or, let's go, okay, what can I do for you? You know, how can I help you? Um, just imagine that you're doing that with God and saying, I may not have the big picture of what you're doing in life, or even in my life, or even, you know, in church. Let me leave that for all the prophets that are very, very, very bigger than me. But, um, today is Friday. It's nine AM. God, what's on your heart today? What can I do for you today? You will be shocked. You'll be shocked how even the meditation of your heart begins to evolve, and it begins to be Christ-centered. And when I say Christ-centered, it doesn't necessarily mean, oh, it's Jesus, 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 because the name Jesus or the person Jesus. Is not just one person with a title. It is a truth. It is a truth. So for example, what is, what is God's heart over the entertainment industry? What is God's heart over, um, America? What is God's heart over Nigeria? What is God's heart over the fashion industry? You know, what, what, I mean, if we're saying God wants to multiply himself, everything on the earth. He wants his knowledge to be, to, you know, to spread over the earth. I think that covers the scene. How does that want to happen? You think it's by building some five thousand churches? No, of course, people build churches and we attend churches, we're part of churches. But after we go to church on Sunday, what do we do on Monday and Tuesday and Wednesday? That's how God wants for this life to go. In our houses, in, in our households, in our families, like, what do we do in those times? In our dinner times, in our, um, in the time that we're just with our, with our friends, like, how is God glorified in these times? That's God's heart. When David says, give ear to my words, oh Lord, consider my meditation, he was guessing at something. Because there's something that is always on his heart. In fact, that's something that be, having God help me today, I want to fall. He wants to destroy me. My head, he wants to be chopped off. Hey, God, if you don't help me, I'm finished. It can be that, but it's what's. Yeah, it wasn't. I don't care if you think I'm a crime, maybe, you know. You know, so our, our question should always be, in my thoughts today, in my conversations today, in my interactions today, how is Christ glorified? Something that happens overnight, I tell you, sometimes you would have forgotten yourself. I didn't think about God, it was Jesus, Jesus, Jesus. He's not too late, Lord, please, I'm sorry, what do you think? You know, because if I could get to that point, he do, he cannot trust us. If we don't want to do is to ask, 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 and what we're asking just for us, 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 we're not asking him, eh, help, can I? So what can I give you? That we need to, we need to get to that point. Oh, thank you for my tuition, oh God. Um, and it's not, it doesn't have to be, oh, if God does something for you in that sense, like in your daily conversations with the Lord. Thank you for life. Thank you for this air that I've been, thank you for giving me a voice to say something. What can I do for you, my Lord? Like, we need to always constantly seek us the kingdom of God in everything, in everything, everything. And also he says, oh Lord, hear me as I pray. Pay attention to my groaning. Pay attention to my groaning. You think that if you're doing the heart of God, and you're interceding for people, or you're carrying out his will. You think he will not pour his, his grace over that thing? Think he will not pour his grace over that thing? No, you need to reason it, reason it. You think he will not give you the grace that is needed to do it? Do you think so? But Stu says, give heed to the cry of my voice, my, my king and my God. Those, those words, they carry, they carry so much power because somebody can be your king and not be your God. Anyway, we say, I, I don't know, if you was president or, you know, and then you just, you just push. You know, and then you just, you just push it away. I say, it's not my own perspective. Hey, I'm not telling you that's where I stand. Please, eh, this broadcast is shared online. Don't go and say what I did not say. But people have said it, so let's leave it like that. Um, somebody can be your God and not be your king, meaning you, um. You, you, because God is a deity that we, that we worship. And that's even surface level, but just for the surface level definition, let's leave it at that. You know, but it's a deity that you, something that you hold high. That you think is the reference for everything, that you think is the start and finish of everything, that you think you submit to, that's God. And deeper level, a little bit deeper, because that's maybe the deeper level, your God is anything that you exalt most. Here. If that's your body, if that's your husband or your wife, your partner or food, God help you. That is your God or money, your work, anything that you exalt the most in your heart is your God. Here, anything that has the most of your attention, anything that you pay heed to the most, the most important thing in your life is your God. That's it. Um, you know, but your king is someone who has authority over the, um, rules of your house, over the rules of your life. The king of a nation, what he does is he sets out laws, sets out rules, leads the people, you know. So, eh, a god can also be a king, but a god may not necessarily be king. So David saying, my king and my God is very, very important to, to. David acknowledges, acknowledges rather that Yahweh is his king, meaning somebody who rules over me, somebody who is lord over me. But he's also my God, somebody who accepts my worship every time. Okay. Um, let me see, strong definition of a king here means royal, you know, I mean, like, Malcham, I don't know what to say. Hopefully we can, um, research that before the next meeting. Um, but I mean, it, it says king, royal, and then, um. God here means Elohim. So you can see that there are two different, two different, um, um, names, you know, for God. So he's saying, my king, the one who has authority over me. So Elohim as in the, the, the name for the Godhead, God the Father, God the Son, God the Spirit, you know. My king and my God. Um. Give heed to the voice of my, I'm my king and my God, for to you I will pray. Still, that is important for us to know that he called God king and he called God God. Because again, God, the deity is the one who receives our worship, who, who pray to, who we, um, revel reverence, you know. Um. You don't necessarily revering king or worship a king. You mentioned do that. He has become your God. So, yeah, David acknowledges that God is his king and is God. He's not God, he is, he is God. It's one thing to, for example, I know that some people hold Shango as their God. It doesn't mean he's my God. You know, I acknowledge, I acknowledge actually that he's a God to people. But he's not my God. So there is a personalization that is here. Um, my king and my God. For to you I will pray. So there's a knowing in the heart of David that. There's only one person that receives my worship. There's only one person that receives my prayers. And it is only to that person that I will pray, that I will lament, that I will ask, that I would seek. And that's why it's almost as if you don't have any other thing, any other person that he goes like. Hello, just go and tell your friend now. But even knew that there are some things that his friend cannot give me. Like, this one is not something that my friend can give me. It's not something that my, my sons or my brothers. No, he's not the only one that can understand. He's the one that created me. He's the one that knows me. You know. Yeah, um, sorry. What was I saying? He acknowledges that, you know, um, it is only to God that he will pray. It's only to God that he will pour out his hearts. You know, um, true. I think we should take this today before we end. So my voice you shall hear in the morning, oh, Lord. In the morning I would direct it to you and I will look. I will look up. There's always something, sometimes I'm praying, when I'm praising God, especially when I'm praising God and I'm like, and like this, the lyric of this one is, it's in my hand and I'm like. Oh, Lord, and I point my hand. Sometimes I'm like, eh, is that everybody, is it in my hands? Is it around me? Like, I can't hear you. I'm sorry. I don't know if you would do what I do, you know, um. But there is, there's a spiritual significance. It's, it's a form of education, you know, the exalt, you are saying that, not like, not, not that God's physical residence is up. And it's kind of down on our feet. I mean, it's true in a sense, but it's not, it's not, it's not, it's not necessarily saying, no, it's inside the clouds. And so we're just pointing it like, ah, Baba, eh, skydiving, you know. This is what we say, which is here today, you know, in the clouds, um, yeah, still, no, that's not what you're doing. You're saying that there is, I'm exalting, no, rather, you're exalted. So in my thoughts and my actions right now, I'm also exalting you. But it's already exalted, whether or not it's exalted. It's wisdom for you to exalt him. But like, when we look up or when we, um, it's, it's, it's a posture of our heart, it's a state of mind when you look up. Whether you're praying or you're worshiping, like saying something, even in the midst of conversation, you just say, ah, God now. And you just turn him and then you look up. It's a form, it is, it's a, it is spiritual, um, um. It's a physical action with a spiritual significance, you know, you look up and you just, it just means that. There is an exaltation in your heart in the way that you think about God. So you, you look up and you just say, you know. Oh, Lord, help me or hear my cry or, you know, help, like, there's just a, I'm exalting you. I know that you are highly lifted. You know, so David says, my voice is here in the morning, oh, Lord, in the morning I will direct it to you. That's my voice. And I will look up. Meaning the posture of my heart would be that you're exalted. And looking up actually, not just, not just, it, it's not just you exalting God, it's also you understanding that where you are. Where God is is all, not physically, this understanding, I hope I'm not confusing you. Where God is, is a, is a, is a place of exaltation. It's an exalted place. So where help will come from? Where answers will come from? It's from an exalted place. Where life will come from? It's, it's from an exalted place. That tells you that we are not beggars. One of who that constantly doing, you know, because God was giving this one. Because where we are, I mean, as scripture says, we're seated with Christ. It's not a call to be. Gospo or, or proud, you know, but it's a call for us to understand where we are. Because the Lord is exalted and because he has, by his grace and mercy, you know, bring us, brought us rather to that place of exaltation. Every time that we look up, we acknowledge that life comes from on high. Help comes. Samuel David says, now I will lift up my eyes to the hills from where call, comes my help. And help comes to the Lord, who made, who made everything and the earth. So that's three, um, Psalm fifty-five verse seventeen and Psalm eighty-eight thirteen. And just read those verses and then, then we'll round it up. I hope we're being blessed. I hope that light is coming to us straight. I hope, yeah. There is a knowing in our hearts. And the will of God. I'm just retreading Psalm fifty-five seventeen and Psalm eighty-eight verse thirteen. Thank you, dummy. Thank you so much, Deline. Okay, so, eighty-five verses thirteen is, um, what to you I have cried out, oh, Lord, and in the morning my prayer comes to you. That's why, please do not forsake your morning devotion. If Alex, Alex, not that messy. I like how we call it, you know, morning devotion. And that's something that I'm trusting God to always help me, um, keep. Because there's just something about waking up and then talking to the Lord. It doesn't have to be warfare every morning, please. I don't know how many enemies you have, like that much. You know, but like just the, the, just the fellowship that happens between you and the Lord in the morning. Most of the time in the morning, I don't have any remorse. I just want to like love up on God. Um, I don't mean that I'm a very, oh, my daddy, my baby situation, just to offer my worship to God. Um. I'm not saying that's what you should be. I'm just telling you that it's joy that comes from starting your day. Yes. Psalm fifty-five seventeen says, every evening, morning and noon I cry out to the church and he hears my voice. There's no part of the day that, um, that, that the Lord does not hear us. You know, the idea of the morning is that, oh, I'm starting my day and I start with the Lord. Okay, so in the morning I will direct it to you and I will look up. Again, looking up is a form of saying, God is exalted in my thoughts. God is exalted in my heart, in my, in my eyes, actually, exalted in my eyes. Um, every, every answer that I need will come from, from the top, from top to bottom. I kid, I kid. Praise God. Praise God. Praise God. I think that I have delivered God's heart to us this evening. We put a pin, you know, that, um, on that. And then on Thursday next week, we go again. Who wants to share anything? I really hope that we've been blessed. I hope that, you know, we've received likes, um, from the Lord. Me, I have. So I'm really hoping that you have too. I'm hoping that you have too. But I'd love to hear from us. I'd love to hear from you. Are we taking some time to, you know, ponder? Meditate to, to reminisce? Hello, dummy.
Okay.
Sorry, my little kept. Cry, 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 cry. I think Netalk is still kept, you know. Because I come barely, I can't even hear you at all. Oh, is anyone else hearing, dummy? Emmy, do you want to try again? Hello? Okay, dummy has gone to the call. Let's wait a while for him to, I think Netalk has been really, really throwing people out. But let's wait for, yeah, yeah, some seconds or hopefully seconds. See if he joins again. Or does anyone want to go next? Well, we'll wait for dummy. Okay. I'm trying to see if dummy was still joining the call. I know that his network is really. Every evil power over our network will cast you out into the system. I think we should do joint intercession for that, maybe it's Network. You really wanted to share. You really wanted to share something, you know. In fact, I don't think it's, it's on, is, um, online. I just sent him a message on WhatsApp and I can see that he's not delivering. Ask all the people of God. What do we do? Keep pushing up me now. What do we do? Wow, hello, Christopher. You're welcome. You're joining the benediction, but we are very happy to have you on the call. Um, yeah, we're just about rounding up. Someone was about to share, you know, something with us and he. Got thrown off the call by the networks, but we're waiting for him to join back so that he can share what he wanted to share. Um, hopefully you can cast your replay. I just realized that my own is up to buffered, so I'll say hopefully you can cast your replay. Um, when it is uploaded. But, yeah, we're waiting for dummy to join the call again. Okay, so I think that we, we may have to. I don't know, maybe he will share his thoughts on WhatsApp. Maybe we share his thoughts on WhatsApp. Uh, yeah, if you can just, you know, leave a message on WhatsApp to say, um, tag him. So that he would not, so that we will not forget, tag him on WhatsApp and tell him that, tag him on the group, I mean. Um, and tell him to share his thoughts, you know, on WhatsApp. Um, it would help. But, yeah, thank you, thank you.